Good morning, everyone. We'll call the October 2nd, 2012 meeting of the Jackson City Council to order. And we'll call on Vice Mayor Charles Rumm to lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise.
If you would, pray with us. Dear Father, I come to you this morning giving thanks for all your many blessings, for we acknowledge that without you, we are nothing. Dear Lord, I just give you thanks for the members of this council and the employees of the City of Jackson for their willingness to serve and their willingness to help their fellow man. Dear Lord, I just ask that the actions that this council takes and the words that are spoken are those that are pleasing unto you, and it's in the name of your Son Jesus that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I think you can show a roll call that all council members are present. Item four is approval of the minutes, the September 4th, 2012 meeting of the council. If there are no additions or any corrections to those minutes, we'll go ahead and indicate that they are approved. May I indicate that if there's anyone present who would like to make a comment under any item, under new business, when we get to new business, or I'll call on anyone else, any item under new business. Okay, we have about three proclamations this morning, and as I walk down, let me ask one of our city's finest, if he would, to make his way up, and that's Jackson Police Officer Derek T. Tisdale. And I'll ask the other members of the Jackson Police Department that are here just to come on up with him. You guys just come on around over here if you want to, and back, and we'll... It's quite an honor for me to read this proclamation and give it to Officer Tisdale for his service in the armed forces of this country. We're extremely proud of him, as we are extremely proud of each and every police officer that's a member of the City of Jackson Police Department. So with great honor, let me read this proclamation, present it to Officer Tisdale. Whereas this proclamation is to recognize Jackson Police Department Officer Derek D. Tisdale's receipt of the United States Army Bronze Star Award. And whereas Sergeant First Class Tisdale distinguished himself by notorious service as platoon sergeant with a troop, first squadron, 287th Armored Cavalry Regiment, 13th Sustainment Command in Baghdad, Iraq. And whereas Operation Iraqi Freedom, Sergeant First Class Tisdale's dedication to duty, technical and tactical expertise, and focus on mission directly contributed to the unit's success. And whereas Sergeant First Class Tisdale's actions are in keeping with the finest traditions of military service and reflect distinct credit upon himself, the 13th Sustainment Command, and the United States Army. Whereas his great pride that the Jackson City Council and all the City of Jackson employees recognize Officer Tisdale's dedicated service to our nation. Now therefore, I gerrig yes, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 2nd, 2012, as Derek D. Tisdale's day, and urge all citizens to congratulate Officer Tisdale for achieving this most distinguished honor. Let's all rise and give Officer Tisdale a hand.
To the mayor, City Council, to the command staff of the Jackson Police Department. Let me just say it's indeed an honor for you all to recognize the soldiers of the Jackson Police Department and the soldiers of the City of Jackson. Thank you for having a system in place where soldiers can serve in a capacity outside of their work assignments, that they can deploy and not have issues with coming home to a job. Thank you for having people in place that support families that are left behind. And again, we just thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you.
Officer, we are honored that you're a city employee and member of the Jackson Police Department. We have Sergeant Byron Taylor with the Jackson Police Department, and this is a proclamation that's always our big night tonight. And that's our Night Out. And this is a proclamation, whereas the National Association of Town Watch, NATW, and Target are sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on October 2nd, 2012, entitled National Night Out. And whereas last year's National Night Out campaign involved citizens, law enforcement agencies, civic groups, businesses, neighborhood organizations, and local officials from over 15,000 communities, from all over 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities, and military bases worldwide. And all, over 37 million people participated in National Night Out 2011. And whereas the 29th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the City of Jackson to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the City of Jackson plays a vital role in assisting the Jackson Police Department and the Madison County Sheriff's Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the City of Jackson and is supporting National Night Out 2012 locally. And whereas it's essential that all citizens of the City of Jackson be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the City of Jackson. And whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I gerrig yes, Mayor of the City of Jackson, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 2nd, 2012, a National Night Out, and urge all citizens to join in supporting this worthwhile event. And Sergeant Byron Taylor is here, let me present this to him, and he's going to tell us where all we're going to be tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the mayor, the City Council, command staff, police department for allowing us to participate in this program. I was a little nervous yesterday with the weather. We changed it to October, and it was raining, but I look like I'm going to have a good day today, so I urge you to get out and participate in the parties. Thank you.
And we have one other proclamation as to National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And let me ask Lisa Kincaid, she's here, Linda Randolph, Dave Montoya, and Margaret Dugan, and Melissa Whitaker, that they would come up and accept these proclamations. All just come on over here and gather around. Thank y'all for being here this morning, and thank you for what you do. Great, you want to introduce them, have them stand, or come up? Have them come on up if you'd like. Now who are these students?
These are children that just had a work-based problem through the public school system.
Okay, are they from one school or a number of schools? All from Liberty. Y'all come on up.
They work daily and they work steadily.
Right, right. And we're going to have to hurry so you guys can get back in school, okay? Okay, this is a proclamation, whereas workplaces that welcome the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas in this spirit, Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, is recognizing National Disability Employment Awareness Month this October to raise awareness about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities. And whereas we recognize that activities taking place during this month will reinforce the value and talent people that people with disabilities add to our workplaces and communities, and affirm Jackson, Madison County's commitment to an inclusive community. Therefore, now therefore, I gerrig yes, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim October 2012 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to recognize and participate in its observance. It's great to have you all here this morning, and let me present this proclamation to whomever, and if you and I can come up and tell us a bit about what I was planning.
We just thank you all for this opportunity to bring it to the attention of the general public. This is an awesome, awesome experience for these children as we work diligently for post-high school outcomes. And if you'll look and research, we don't have many opportunities for these kids, and so I hope that this brings to mind the great, great need that we have. These children don't have 30 or 40 options like other high school graduates do, so we appreciate the community being with us on this, and please, let's all scratch together to make things even better.
Okay, before we get to item seven, I think we have several members, Leadership Jackson here this morning, the future lasers of our city. They're back there taking notes, council, so if y'all would please stand and let us recognize you all. Leadership Jackson, good to have you all here. Thank you all for being here. We'll go to item seven. First reading, consideration of ordinance to rezone property located at 139 Meta Street with my two FH light industrial flood hazard district to I-3 FH general industrial flood hazard district containing 6.8 acres more or less.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
You have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request. This item was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and they have recommended denial of this rezoning request to you. Just to give you a little bit of information about it, this property is located just at the close to Riverside Cemetery, which would be in this area. You can see this property from the bypass coming into downtown. It's the area where the old Jackson sawmill was located for years. This property went into discontinuance of use, and the sawmill shut down some time ago, and this was basically a grandfathered use. It had occurred for many years prior to zoning, so it was allowed to continue, but once it discontinued, the zoning requirements say that after 30 months, it has to come into compliance. And when this area was zoned, they zoned it I-2 around the bypass to keep the heavy industrial uses away from the bypass and away from our gateways. So there was a reason for that zoning to be put in place to keep those uses away from the bypass and not as visible, and so that's what's happened in this case. Mr. Hanifey has asked to rezone this property I-3 to allow him to establish the sawmill again, and we just don't think that use is appropriate based on the heavy nature of it, and the road network in this area has pretty much fallen into disrepair going into this site, and really would be hard pressed to support the heavy log trucks that might be associated with it.
Okay, any, before we have the public hearing, is there any questions from council as to past disordinants? Go ahead, council.
How long has it been since that sawmill was there?
Sawmill's been discontinued for some time. Now, there was a use that, you know, that like at one time, they were doing some wood products or something down there after the sawmill, but the sawmill use has been discontinued for some time.
Kind of like three, four years, five years?
Longer than that, yes.
Any other questions?
How many jobs does it create?
What, the sawmill?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not su... Well, he's not wanting to start the sawmill back. He had a couple individuals that wanted to process some lumber there. I'm not sure how many jobs they would create.
So it's not really going to be a sawmill, it's just going to be a processing plant.
Well, I think they were going to run a saw and...
Process lumber.
Yeah, they were going to saw lumber, and so I guess you could classify it as a sawmill.
Okay, any other, any other questions, council?
Very quickly, Mayor, is Mr. Hanifey here?
I'm not sure.
I guess he's not.
Any other questions? If not, this is ordinance on first reading, and go ahead and conduct the public hearing and see if there's anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to our approval of the ordinance. If you would, please indicate by raising your hand.
Mayor, I will state that we had one property owner that contacted our office that is adjacent to this use and, but wanted to remain anonymous for various reasons, but basically said they were opposed to the use of the property as any heavier use than what it's presently zoned for.
Seeing no, seeing no hands, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing then, and is there a motion for approval of ordinance on first reading?
Recommend denial.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the motion to deny passes with eight members in favor and one voting no.
That was supposed to be a yes.
It was a yes. The vote is unanimous.
Slip of the finger. Okay, item eight is ordinance under second reading and consideration of ordinance to close an abandoned unnamed alley running north between 129 and 131 Morgan Street submitted by Healthy Communities LLC. Council approve that ordinance on first reading.
Move to approve.
Second, motion, second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two, under second reading, is a consideration of ordinance to change the name of CityWalk Plaza to JacksonWalk Plaza submitted by Healthy Communities LLC. Council approve this on first reading. They have a motion, second, discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Third item is consideration of ordinance to change the name of a portion of White Street to North Shannon Street running between West Orleans Street and JacksonWalk Plaza submitted by Healthy Communities LLC.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve, second, discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item four is consideration of ordinance to amend the official municipal code of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, Title 8, alcoholic beverages, Chapter 1, intoxicating liquor, Section 8-115, location of liquor stores and liquor, and zoning districts, to further define the process of amending the liquor district and the liquor district map. Council approve this on first reading. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second, motion, and second, discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with six members in favor, one abstaining, and two voting no.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, thanks, Stan. Item nine, under new business, is approval and acceptance of the 2012 JAG grant for the City of Jackson and Madison County. Chief Campbell is here, if you have any questions as to that particular grant, I think it's a 50-50 grant, Chief. If y'all have any questions, Campbell is here.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. It's 2012 JAG grants, a 50-50 split between the county and the city, $54,000, there's no match, and half of that will go to the city, half to the county.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Chief, the plans for our redo the math, 27,000?
27,000 are to purchase computers, tablet computers for Criminal Investigations Division to be able to go out and process crime scenes, tape crime scenes, canvas, and do interviews with witnesses at the scene.
Thank you.
How many computers will that buy?
Depends on the price when we bid it out.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion for approval and a second, discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two is presentation of the CAPER 2011-2012 annual report by Dave Ross and Jackson Housing Authority.
As part of our requirements for the HUD grants, Home and CDBG in particular, we're required to do a comprehensive annual performance evaluation report due into HUD on September 30th. It has been submitted and signed by the mayor, and the next step is to make a brief presentation or summary of that report for you, so you can have an understanding of what we've been working toward for the past year. You all should have copies of some what we call CAPER bullets.
Do we have any information on it?
Should be in the... This, summary here of what we spent.
How's that, how's that headed, Dave?
It's called CAPER bullets.
Okay.
Basically, we committed it and budgeted it at the beginning of July 1, 2011, $2.7 million in Home and CDBG funds, and of the CDBG funds expended, $721,648 were spent, Home Funds, $219,427, and emergency shelter grant funds expended, which we received from the state, $97,823, which we include into the CAPER even though we're not required to, because it's not, even though it's federal dollars, it goes to the state who then distributes out to the communities. So we spent over a million dollars of that $2 million that have been assigned or allocated to projects. The highest amount, of course, is, as you see in this table here, is housing, with 32.1% was spent for the minor emergency repair program and the Target Rehab Program, which is funded by Home. And we have, have a goal of approximately 20 houses per year to do a minor emergency repair, and we completed something, I believe it was 38. In the same way with Home and program and the Target Rehab Program, we've exceeded the goals on that, as well as we include in that the CHODO process. And we moved over to a new program this year called the CHODO Acquisition Programs in order to put more housing, affordable housing out, but on the other end of it to be, find a way to cut the cost on it. So we have gone to acquiring existing homes that are in the real estate market and doing some minor rehab on those instead of building new ones on vacant lots and building from there, and our average cost has dropped from around $110,000 down to around $60,000, $70,000 per unit. The other affordable housing are down payment assistance programs, which we provide citywide, and we've overachieved that goal. We don't have enough dollars to do a lot, and a lot depends on the market, but we have overachieved those goals. We'd like to do somewhere between five to 10 per year, and we are averaging, since the program started, anywhere from 11 to 12. Special needs housing is JSIL, putting in handicap ramps and some modifications to allow, and we have changed that program this year to go to rental, provided to rental housing as well, since the fair housing law allows us to do that, as long as it's put the handicap ramps or any modifications are put in place by the tenant. The tenant has to, if they move, put the house back into order, and that's what these dollars are used for, to assist that tenant. And so that will be an increase in the future. Of course, our homeless program is to match the ESG dollars, and all of those programs, the Dream Center primarily, West Tennessee Legal Services, and Southwest has some homeless facilities as well, and wrap. And CDB, public infrastructure this year was primarily wrapping up some of the roads and so forth, but that's under the 108 program over in the NSP area around the lift, and so that work is almost complete. We will wrap that up this current year. In addition, that's also where the funds come out of to repay the 108 loan, and some of these funds in the public infrastructure are for the completion of rifles renovation of the old Nando Jones Building. Public services is Operations Hope and West Tennessee Legal Services, providing referrals on fair housing issues, and CBDO includes this year, the $50,000 was for Boys and Girls Club. We added a program this year, which is already complete, which will be reported next year, was the special housing, I mean not housing, but jobs program for juveniles and at-risk youth. And the other part is planning admin, which is below our 20% level that we're allowed, so, and those dollars go, are reprogrammed under CDBG back into activities each year that aren't spent in admin. That is basically, so overall, 44.4% is for housing, and that's with a major decrease in funds this year. And so we're still on track, but we still have problems with Concretes. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, council.
Mr. Ross, good morning. I understand that you said that the housing appropriations is down. Is there a effort to collaborate services with Jonah Affordable Housing CDC, which is now through community service with Southwest Human Resources, with Habitat for Humanity, our neighborhood services? Is there a collaborative effort to identify, and you said something about vacant lots, instead of building on those to purchase dilapidated homes, which you say is more lease expensive? Is there a collaborative effort between all these housing agencies to identify homes that need repair to, you said 20 was the goal this year, you did 38, is that correct?
That was on the minor emergency repair program, which we handle.
Okay, but I...
But we do collaborate, we do, because I have in each of their contracts that there's technical assistance or a training that are required to be at that, so when I call a meeting of them, which we do frequently, they all come in together, we discuss the issues in the housing, and one of the things, and we do not rehab dilapidated housing, by the way, and I'd hate to correct you on that.
Okay, you tell them down.
That would be real costly.
Are we still going to build on vacant lots?
Yes, sir, as, as we, you know, one of the, one of the programs that allows us to do, build new housing on site is the Target Rehab Program, which we work through, and we have one now under construction, but there's just not a lot of dollars to do that. I mean, they cut the Home program 37%.
Well, let me ask you, then, my next question would be the blending and blading of funds between the different agencies. Is that happening?
Well, I can't, I can't, yes, it is, for the uses that HUD allows us to collaborate on and to work with. I cannot match Home dollars with CD, for Home program with CDBG. So I do have to have some separation of the funds.
Okay.
And the majority of the CDBG funds are for the minor emergency repair program. The CHODOs use the Home dollar, and we target as best we can, and we would like to be able to target more of those houses as we go forward with programs such as the Healthy Neighborhoods or Choice Neighborhoods program, should it ever be funded. But there's, there is a major planning effort and coordination.
Your emergency repair is up to 5,000, that's the most you can spend on emergency repair? That's the most you can spend on emergency repair?
We have, it's $4,999 for lead-based paint reasons. And, but we also grant a waiver on emergency items that will cause some health and safety up to $8,999.
With respect to your referral system for those needing assistance, how do we handle that? Or you all just handle it in terms?
Word of mouth is the best way we have to get that program out. We are never short of applications with the dollars we receive. In fact, we are geared up to the point that if we had more dollars, we would be able to handle the increase of applications. And we may have to make some modifications.
That is the reason I'm asking about the blending and blading of funds. Is that, can you do that with your federal funding with the other agencies?
Yes.
You can?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question. You mentioned the juvenile program.
Yes, ma'am.
What's age of the juveniles you serve in? What's the nature of that?
I wish Vicky Lake were here, because she kind of handled that. But it was, I don't have the final report in. But those at risk in juvenile court, I don't have the numbers.
I think the age, I was talking about the age.
Age limits, I believe it's.
We had 40 some odd over that were of working age. And then we had about 60, yeah, under that that went after Jackson State for mentoring and for.
So there's some high school age.
Yeah.
Ages 10 to 17 is what that program was.
Okay, that's what I want, okay, and, okay.
Mr. Chairman. The reason, Mr. Ross, that I'm asking those questions, because we have so many, we're working with our building department, boarded up houses. And we want to see those removed and get some homes built on those boarded up and tear them down through the abatement process. And we would like to see some more homes come up on vacant lots. I know and understand about the funding. That's why I'm asking for a collaborative effort between all the different housing agencies.
I would, one of the visions I would hope to see is that we have, as we do that, that there be some modifications to the CDBG program that will allow us to go forward with, and some statutory changes. That will allow homeownership programs to go to 120% of median income so we can begin to have a mix of incomes in neighborhoods, which make the neighborhoods more viable. But that's a down-the-road vision. I'm not sure it'll happen before I retire.
I hope it does. And I hope that all the agencies will get together and serve the housing community. Thank you.
Would it be too much trouble, Dave, if we could get a listing of where those houses are located?
Yes, ma'am.
That would be great.
Now, one of the things we're having to do under that program is to make sure that we also meet our fair housing goals into non-concentrated areas, which is basically low and moderate income areas, high racial areas. And so we have, with that acquisition program, we have a one-on-one, one outside the NRSA, one inside the NRSA. For example, Jonah just bought a house on Ridgemont. Then they also did one down here on Hayes. So we're working with that type of balance.
Okay, any other questions from council? Council, long?
Dave, on the 2.7 million that we've been budgeting, the $1 million that we've spent, what's the timeframe for that? I know that the CDB money timeframe is different from the fiscal year for the city.
It's a matter of carryover from year to year, which we base off of our HUD report. It's called a PR 56, which shows how much, basically, was unspent from previous year projects that are still active. And I try to keep a spreadsheet on that. But we do carry that over. And part of these expenditures are from previous years as well as new year, new year money. New year money is harder to spend. She's got such a backlog on minor emergency repair that, but that is all basically caught up. We have a spending drawdown requirement of 1.5 times our existing grant. That has to be spent annually, and we always meet that goal. That goal's already been met for this year because the carryover fund is now beginning to catch up.
Okay, so the 2.7 million.
There's a lot of paperwork ahead you have to do to get a project started, like RIFAs. It probably took six months to get that project cleared out with environmental and historic requirements and setting up contracts and so forth.
Well, my question is, the 2.7 million that we've got committed and budgeted, that doesn't have to be spent by the end of the current fiscal year, does it? That can go farther than.
It carries over. But the requirement is we have to spend 1.5 times what our current allocation is. So that is the major requirement of keeping the projects on time. But once they're allocated to a project and cleared and so forth, then we basically continue to work with it and get those dollars spent. That is also a way for me to identify projects that are slow-moving. You know, for instance, JSL's behind on their spending. And they had some directorship problems with Glenn dying and the new director, and some change in personnel and so, policies and so forth. And one thing to get them back on track was to begin doing rental units as well as homeownership units. But sometimes we will take a slow-moving project or complete it. And then the process at the end is those become unobligated funds. In order for us to do a new project, we come back to you with those amendments that we do. And then those then are allocated or obligated to a project.
Any other questions of council?
I have a few, if I could.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Ross.
Morning.
I had just a couple of questions. You mentioned that you did have a decrease this year in home funds.
Yes, sir.
Were CDBG funds decreased as well?
They were decreased several years back, and then they've been at that about the same level, around $500,000.
And secondly, what is the, what's HUD's definition or formula for affordable housing?
As long as it meets low and moderate income benefit. That's, with that, you have, you got to meet one of three thresholds. Low and moderate income benefit, a major emergency in our elimination of slum and block. And then you have a long list of eligible projects. And then, so you have to meet both.
Okay. And relative to the housing stock that JHA has, do you think we're on track to be able to accommodate the citizens here?
When you say JHA, do you mean public housing or CDBG? We do separate, I can't mingle those funds whatsoever.
Okay, well, actually, both. Could you discuss those separately?
I can't discuss the public housing side. I'm not, I don't think I'm qualified to do that.
Okay, well, then just the CDBG side.
The CDBG side is, we have a constant decline in the housing stock, either, especially now that we've had the environmental court. And that helps. But then we also have large amounts of vacant properties, of which we do not have enough funds to solve or put housing back on to that with what our resources are at this time.
Okay. And lastly, I'd just like to echo Councilman Buchanan's concern relative to the vacant lots that are in many of our districts. We would, of course, like to move as quickly as possible and would call for a collaborative effort. It's also a public safety issue as well as a law enforcement issue for us. And I'm sure in the cities moved to tear down many of those dilapidated buildings. It's just left holes in our neighborhood. So any effort that you can have in that area, we'd appreciate it.
Primarily, the CHODOs are the effort right there for them to build new. But then their dollars have been decreased. Now, we're required to provide 15% of the home dollars to CHODO. Well, we're providing probably about 40% to CHODOs. And we got to make sure our CHODOs are stable. And they have income stream coming back. So buying up the houses that we have that are on the market that are vacant is one way that we're trying to solve that problem, not with vacant lots. If they get to a point that they've got a good enough income stream working with the rental units they have to keep them viable, then we can begin to look at trying to do more infill. But there's no way that the resources for infill equal anywhere the need for the, to do that. So I tell Congress, I'm going to make some changes to the program. Right now, it doesn't look very positive. Y'all could help by letting your representatives know that we're spending $50 billion a year for prisons, $4 billion for community development program.
I'll call them today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else, counsel? Dave, is any action needed on this?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your report. We're nearing the end of new business. Sir, you indicated that you were going to make a comment on an item under new business. What is that particular item?
It's about Gander Mountain.
Now, that's. Was there, is there any item that we missed under new business or?
There is no, there is no item on the agenda for that.
Normally, we'll take public comments under any item under new business. And obviously, that is not an item under new business. I'm at the pleasure of the council.
Is that something that's supposed to come possibly before the planning commission?
I don't know, sir, I just.
Stand, do you know where that, that issue? Okay, I'm at the pleasure of the council, whatever. Well, sir, you made your way to City Hall regardless, and we appreciate you being here. If you want to pull up a chair, identify yourself and share your concern with council.
All right. I'm Donald Preston. Most of you know me. What we have is, this is a plot of the residents around Gander Mountain. Rushmead Road runs down like this and across. And Gander Mountain, most of the property come in behind Gander Mountain, right in here. All right? We've had several break-ins out there, and it's getting worse. And people running across our property, and you can't stop them. You can't tell them to not to come back. And I've called the police so much it's pitiful. And I have petition here that I would like to pass to each member of the council, if it'd be.
Sure, we can get somebody to get your petition if you.
I also have an article from the Jackson Sun published in May the 16th of 2005 that, this article right here is highlighted, this is highlighted. You can't read, can't see it on this, but I need to pass this around and let you read it. Would that be all right?
Some of it's highlighted. Why don't you just read the highlighted part and be fine?
All right. A 30-foot buffer area must be built to the rear of the development where it's about existing residence property. It must be done on one of three options. An eight-foot slight proof fence with light landscaping, an eight-foot tall dense landscaping, or a combination of an earth burn and a slight proof fence with light landscaping totaled at eight foot high. That was in the Jackson Sun, May the 16th, 2005. And it's just been, when they was building it, Mr. DeMint had different people coming in. They tell us this one day, and he changed. They'd be there two or three weeks, then another one come in. Well, they don't know nothing about it. Nothing's ever gotten done. So now we're at a point, we got to do something. Somebody needs to do something. We need some help.
So you're asking the council to look into this or to do this or?
Look into it and see if we can't get the property on and put a fence up there like they said they'd do in the paper in May of 2005.
Well, sir, what's in the paper? We can always go back, I think, to the planning commission. Can we not stand and see the conditions in which that property was rezoned? And I can certainly have staff do that. And I assume at this point, the property owners then would have to be responsible for fulfilling the conditions of that zoning. So we'll go ahead and begin that process with staff and let them take a look at the conditions in which the property was rezoned and what was supposed to have been done. And we'll take a look and see what has not been done. And then we'll be back in contact with the property owner. If you'd be good enough, before you leave, if you can just see Mr. Pilot behind you there and leave your name and a telephone number where they can be in contact with you all, and we'll go ahead and proceed and try to give you all a hand.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, also to add to that, the 2005 vote on that zoning, is that when Gander Mountain was built? Can we look and see what the council voted on with respect to barrier between residents? Because I think I remember something about that.
Yeah, I think that's what we're going to do from the planning commission approval that came to council under the sign.
I think we voted on it.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Of the board appointments, item three, board appointments of planning commission, reappointments of Linda Sparks and Chris Edwards. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, discussion. Counsel, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
And appointment to the airport authority.
So moved.
Appointment of Ryan Porter. Have a motion, second?
Second.
We did have a second. Discussion, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
And item four would be budget amendments. Ms. Bell?
Good morning. We have three this morning. The first one that we have is a new division that's being created in the street department called State Street Maintenance, which is offset by the mowing revenues for the contracts of the state of Tennessee. These funds were originally allocated in the street cleaning and SSA budget. So it's just a shifting, no new revenue. It was all in the budget, just creating a new division to track it properly.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion from council. This amendment, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
The second amendment that you have before you is the one that Chief Campbell has already presented for the 2000 JAG grant, this 2012 JAG grant. This is just to get it on the books with the expense of the revenues being budgeted in the amount of $54,140. Again, this will come through the city, and then we'll reimburse Madison County.
Move to approve, second.
A motion and a second. Discussion from council. Counsel, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
The third amendment that you have today is for the Metro Fund, asking for some capital needs in that division. This will come from their reserve that they have. Again, no draw on fund balance to the general fund. This will use the reserves that they have collected for the evidence seizures. And this is for equipment purchases and also to increase the line item for the canine dog by $5,000 to take care of vet bills and food. Total men request is $128,500.
So moved.
Motion, a second? A second. Discussion, council.
So Karen, the dog is getting raised?
Well, we actually, we actually have three dogs. One is retired now, and we're having to take care of him, so, thank you.
Got to take care of it, we just hired a dog. Any other discussion? Counsel, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Final item on the agenda is consideration invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
A motion, a second.
One of those may.
Sure.
I noticed on the 15,000 dollar payment that we're making to the baseball club is again being posed to the general government. I'd like to reiterate that I would like to see all the cost of the ball club in Pringles Park, be included in the Pringles Park line item so we can keep up with expenditure.
My action item is to meet with ATRA. They disagree, they say that the marketing decision, the only cost that should go to Pringles Park are the upkeep and maintenance of Pringles Park.
Well, I wouldn't mind it showing as marketing, but I would like to see it as a Pringles Park line item so we can kind of keep up with the expenditure. Because, for two reasons, I guess, if we didn't have Pringles Park, we wouldn't have these expenditures. And second, I believe this expenditure is one of the requirements in the lease. And the only thing I'm trying to do is just keep up with what the actual cost of the park is.
Well, my action item was to meet with them. They agreed with me and the mayor, the way we're allocating expenses. If you want to call another meeting and have Mike Hewitt meet with us, I'll be glad to do that.
Okay, I would like to do that. Okay, I would like to do that, because I really would like for us to, you know, if we spread these costs over, it's hard to keep up with what the actual cost of the park is. If you don't mind.
I'm ready.
Did we vote on that issue?
No.
Okay, any other discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote passes with eight members in favor and one abstaining.
Before we adjourn, let me just reiterate National Night Out this evening, and that is from 5 until 8. Counsel? Thank you all. There may no further business. Meeting is adjourned.